Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Donna.
Ms. Lanning?
Here.
Mr. Richmond?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Miller? What's so funny?
It's usually Mr. Miller.
That's true. And Ms. Jennifer?
Here.
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there... are no recognitions, right?
There are not.
Okay. Audience participation? Jeff Leek?
Thank you for another opportunity to speak here. I know the long-range planning update is tonight, and there's going to be a lot of... a lot made of whatever that entails. I just wanted to share a few thoughts with that of what I would like to see. And if I was selling this product to the community, I would have liked... I would have came to the community showing how the value in it, showing how it's worked, how... showing how consolidating our elementary schools have increased performance in attendance, how it's lower discipline issues. That's what I'd like to show them. I don't know if we can show them that. I don't know, looking at the past 20 years of what we've done, has that happened? You know, I've argued... I argued against closing Lake, and I... and the argument for closing it was it wasn't safe because you couldn't get there when the trains went through. And then I said, "You can go down 759." And then a few years later, when they opened it, I said, "Well, what about the trains?" And they said, "Well, you can go down 759." They used my argument to open it back up for early childhood. So it makes the community feel like how much thought is put into everything. Are we thinking of the absolute... are we doing our due diligence? Are we... we trying to think of what... what's all the different angles on things? My goal for elementary schools is this, and this is simple. Wherever you want to go, whenever you move to our town or move within our town, the only question that should come about is, or the only concern is, is we're going to have to buy new shirts. We're just going to have to buy new shirts. We're going to change colors. There's no drop in the value of education. I challenge the board on whatever the long-range plan is, let's put something in there that says we're going to balance free and reduce lunch across the district. And it can be done, and it can be done much better than it is now. Leslie Laught Beach, who was on the Long Range Committee with me, said something on Facebook the other day, says, "If you call yourself ugly enough, eventually, that's all anyone else will see." I believe we have been our own worst enemy on our long-range planning, on our facilities. I could have taken my children anywhere, and I chose to stay here. It's because I'm in the buildings all the time, and I see all the good things that happen. But other people who are not in those buildings all the time do not. We need to do a better job of letting the community know, letting the area know, that there are... there are so many good things that go on here. And... and I think this... this whatever... I'm all for building the facilities, I'm all for upgrading, retrofitting, whatever, but a new home will not fix a broken marriage. And I... I challenge, will the new facilities help? They could, but they're not the magic pill for all our issues. We have making... made great strides in... from environment to staffing, and we have a long way to go. I challenge the staffing issue. I've been here speaking about how to keep more staff for 10-plus years, with previous superintendents telling me, "Hey, if they don't like it, they can go down the road." That's where we lost our staffing, and now we're... we're receiving the dividends of that attitude. I could go on talking forever, but this community wants to help. This community, the people I talk to, want to move forward, and they want to support. The reason that we stall all the time and want to go back to the drawing board is because, for the most part, all the plans that have been given have been about this asking the same thing just in a little bit different way. So our differences, we all want what's best for students. My... my belief is different than what others are, but respect others' views on that. And if you're going to come to something, you need to educate them on how it's better. It can't be, "Trust us, we know what's best. We know what's best for you." It needs to be, "This is going to help attendance here. This is going to help student performance. This is going to help achievement." Or it also needs to be, "When we did this, it didn't work last time when we... when we closed Lake, moved to Hosea, or when we closed Humboldt, moved to... or moved to Limburg, but we're going to do it different this time. We're going to do it this way." And our sixth grade, seventh grade issue, and I'm over, our sixth grade, seventh grade issue, that was all brought upon because we were too afraid to do the right thing. That's a self-inflicted wound out there. I know I'm over time, I'll leave it at that, but we can do better, and this community wants to move forward. They just might not want to move forward in the way that a certain small portion of the community wants to move forward, and I hope that we respect that as we move on. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Leek. Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda.
We have some changes to the agenda. Mark Correll, our Director of Human Resources, has asked to have Items 5F, updated job descriptions, and Item 8I, Activities Director Job Description removed from the agenda. Board members, your agendas reflect all of these. Also, Latonya Williams, our Board President, asked to have Item 8F, SJSD Professional Learning Plan 2526, and Item 8G, Curriculum Revisions 2526, moved to Items 9A and B respectively, with all of the items moving down. She also asked for Item 5F, externship experience grant, moved to Item 8I.
And the agendas at the workstation reflect all that?
Yes, yes. The audience has the agenda that was posted. The agenda that the board members have reflects those changes.
So do you... do we need to approve the agenda as presented, or...
As amended.
Prove it. I make a motion to approve as amended.
Thank you, Whitney. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? If not, let's call the vote, please. Well, I have one thing. Could you post the new agenda online, I guess, like after the meeting?
Yes, yes. We'll get it. I... once I pull those in, Kevin, all I need it, it'll show up on the screen.
Okay, perfect.
And it'll be online as well.
Okay, now the vote, please.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six, one. Consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
So much.
Thank you, Whitney. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Jennifer said that, right? Okay. Any discussion? All right, if not, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
And the motion?
Yes, yes.
And the motion passes? Seven, zero. Admin reports?
I don't have anything.
Gabe don't have anything?
Dr. McGinnis? Mine will be super brief. I just wanted to let everyone know, we ended summer school last Wednesday. We had a high count of 3,103 kids on the highest point, and then we ended last Wednesday with 2,687 students, so it's about 100 less kids than what we had last summer for enrollment. Katie is still working on those final numbers. And then the only other piece would be professional learning. We have a lot of professional learning going on right now for our teachers, everything from assessment to success-ready Students Network. So you've probably seen some pictures on social media. Lots of staff are engaging in that professional learning, so I just want to take an opportunity to say thank you again for approving that career ladder start time. So I know they've been able to take advantage of that as well. So that's all for me. I'll be speaking to some of the items in a little bit.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. McGinnis. Okay, Dr. Segres?
Yes, first thing, 2526 budget. You've had this for a little over a month to take a look at. There are a few small changes. Ironically, the budget I'm bringing you tonight is slightly better. Actually has a slight surplus to it, $258,000. A few notes, and I've told you that we've tried to give you a very conservative budget here. Important to understand that we still don't have an approved budget from the state. It's weighing the governor's signature. He has told June 30th to do that. So we are operating off some of the numbers that Desi has given us, but we have... we've gone below that number for the SAT and for Prop C as far as our assess valuation. And I go back, one of the reasons we have tried to be very conservative, I've talked about, is in case that there would be withholdings later on. We just got an email last week from Desi. The 6760 number that they've given us all year long for this year is being reduced to 6750. Ms. Miller, I see you chuckling because we've talked about this, and the reasons giving... given were because revenues were down in gaming, lottery, and cigarettes. So I just... food for thought there, that if you all game more, smoke more, and buy more lottery tickets, that would have fully funded that, so.
Missouri.
And yes, that's my shot at Missouri finance and school education there, so. So we've been... gone low on that. For assess valuation, our last five years, our assess valuation has averaged a 2.23% increase. We use 2%, so we're conservative there as well. We've talked a lot about our decreased enrollment, which impacts our funding. From 1920 to this school year, we've gone from 10,718 students to 9,979. I predicted that this would be the really tough year. The fiscal '25 would be the year that we would struggle because of that loss of pre-COVID ADA, but we've done a pretty good job of riding out that storm. Also, we still don't know on a lot of federal funding allocations, so we're making best guesses on those expenditures. I think we've done a pretty good job. They were built with the 1.17 salary increase that you improved. Other areas, we did a pretty good job of keeping either flat, or actually, we had some slight decreases in a few areas that we've been working hard to try to tie and get under under wraps. So at the end, fund balance is estimated to be at 20.3%, which is within our board policy guidelines. You may wonder why this year we're projected to be at a 25.26%, but we're going to have a surplus, and our percent will go down. Well, it's because your budget is larger. It's all about a percent of your fund balance. So happy to answer any questions there. Again, I kind of joked, said, "I don't know how this is to present a budget with a surplus. I've never done it before," but I'm glad that we could give you a slight surplus.
You're matching my confusion. So can you explain, so the surplus is 258, and the fund balance is 20%?
The overall budget is larger.
So does the 258 counted in... into the fund balance?
Yes, yes.
Are there any additional questions?
Not, I would ask for a motion to approve the fiscal '26 budget.
So much.
Thank you, Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Almost got it, Mike. All right, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven, zero.
Okay, next?
The M&M certax. The M&M certax, I'm going to try to give you a very brief description of what that is. Basically, it's a replacement tax on commercial real estate on revenue that is lost due to some revisions of Missouri statutes years ago. The revenue we receive from that, we can place it into whichever fund we want to. We have traditionally placed that in Fund II. Because we've had a large number of capital projects this year, we're needing to move some money to Fund IV. We're limited each year by statute that we can only move 7% from our operating to our... our Fund IV. Don't ask me where the 7% number came from, why 7% is a magic number, but that's what our limitation is. Because we are finishing up quite a few HVAC projects, things like that, we need to move some money to Fund IV. By statute, we're allowed, and we've worked this with our auditors, we're allowed to go back previous years and move Fund II to Fund IV in those previous years. So this is really a procedural piece, but it does need board approval. And really what it is, is it allows us to amend where that money was put into over the last four years. So I would ask... I'd take any questions, might have. I know that's a lot of convoluted information there, but really, this is a procedural piece for us just to move that money to Fund IV, to be able to take care of those capital purchases, and then it needs board approval.
So you're going to take 2.8 from two to four, and is that's going to be reflected on this year's budget?
That will show a balance. It will make a balance then in Fund IV, so we're able to fund everything in Fund IV.
So when we finish, so on 6:30, we'll finish with that there, and then we'll start over with that new amount, or will this...
Or it'll be enough to fund everything we've done this year in fiscal '25, yes.
And then when will it actually happen? Like, after we approve this?
After you approve it. It happened?
It's just quickly.
Yeah.
Robert, I have a couple of questions. You're actually talking about moving almost $14 million, right?
Yes.
And the question I have is, what's that going to do to Fund II? Fund II is a pretty important...
It doesn't create any issues because... because Fund II can be funded through Fund I as well. Fund II doesn't have to have a rolling balance in it, for example, or it doesn't have... we just have to have enough in Fund II to make the teacher payments at the end of the year. And there is no limitation of 7% moving from Fund I to Fund II.
Yeah, the question I have relative to that is, we made a nice move recently with the salary increases for teachers, and then this year, a more modest change. You know, I... it seems like that we're going to have on the horizon a time that we're going to want to increase that a little more, get a little higher in the, you know, in comparison to what other districts are doing. Will we... will that leave us room to do that?
Your ability to do that moving forward is going to be based a lot on assess valuation increases there, because... or unless you would run some sort of levy. Because, I mean, we put that... that 59 and a half cents last year in. You're going to have that in your operating moving forward as well, so you're going to be in pretty good shape for a couple of years there. As far as being able to make those large... large gains again, I don't know, we've made some pretty good gains over the last three or four years. Gabe may want to chime in on that a little bit, too, but I just want... I just want to make sure that you understand, the Fund II, we don't have to worry about what's in Fund II. This piece that we're going back to and moving this to the M&M to Fund IV, some districts will even put a small levy in their Fund IV every year to fund that. I think Lee Summit maybe does that a little bit, just so they can keep their Fund IV built up. We haven't done the number of capital projects over the year that that's been an issue for us. So Dr. Hedge Course and I visited quite a bit about this as well, so he's familiar with what we're doing here, and he's... he's clued in to what's going on moving forward.
Yeah, and that one thing that I would say is that he's exactly right. Fund I and II are cyclical. They work together. A lot of school districts don't even call it Fund II. They just operate everything out of Fund I. Jenny and Katie will laugh at this, but when I first got here, we had nine funds, and so the confusion is a lot better today than what it was before. So it's not going to affect anything in the future. The revenue that you get from the state of Missouri and the revenue that you get from assess valuation is going to drive what you're asking.
Okay.
So nothing that's happened in the past, or this is not going to affect it in a negative way. You're in a good spot right now, but there's no guarantee. So revenue is going to drive all of that.
And if the... if the state comes through with what their increase in the SAT is this year, that... that will put you in a good position as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Any additional questions? If not, is there a motion? Thank you, Kim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rhonda. Do you can call the vote, please?
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven, zero. Okay, Dr. Segres?
All right. Financials, through the end of May, 91.7% of the fiscal year is completed, and so you can see our operating is at 86%, so we're in good shape there. Our expenses are up $17.3 million this year from last year, and again, the broken record, salaries and benefits and our capital projects, where the majority, the bulk of that is. Revenues, the state is down $5.7 million. Again, broken record due to our loss of ADA, the pre-COVID numbers, but our tax revenues are up $5.8 million, and that's because of the Prop C waiver and because of increasing assess valuation. The healthcare trust, you can see with the investments and everything, at the end of May, the healthcare trust has just a little bit over $6.9 million in it. It's down slightly from April, about $350,000 from April, but it is up from May of $24,087,000. So it is... it is in a good space right now. I did share a little bit more information with you at your tables that I was able to get this today. Sometimes I'm not able to get it to later in the month. Our total medical plan for the year through May is running at a funding ratio of 102.5%, so has a deficit of $367,000 this year. We've talked a lot about the three different plans, especially the EPO. The EPO is running at 152% with a deficit of almost $1.7 million. The PPO is running at a claims ratio of 106% with a deficit of just under $300,000. And the HSA, excuse me, is running at 74% with a surplus of $1.6 million. One thing I shared on there for you, just to give you a little more light into those three different plans, the PEPM, that's an industry term, per employee, per month, how much the cost of that plan is. You can see the EPO is $1,636.70 a month through the end of May. The... the PPO is $1,027, and then the HSA is $695. So we've discussed and... and a lot about how long we're going to be able to maintain that EPO. Again, we'll have some additional funding from employees next year on that, but the cost of that plan is just... it's gotten awfully expensive.
Are we still offering that to new people who come on board?
We are next year, yes. The board passed that with the amounts that the employee is paying is going up considerably.
Are there any additional questions? If they're all done, I'll take a motion for approval, please. Thank you, Kim. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. If you can call the vote, please.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns? Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven, zero. Okay, Dr. Segres?
All right, one last thing. Before I get to that, if you'll indulge me for a little bit, it's last time, I might get an open mic here, so I just have a couple of things I want to say. Say thank you to the board, staff, students, community for allowing me to serve them during my 31 years. It's been a great ride, as I just stated. It's important to emphasize, I want to thank the community. My wife and I first moved to St. Joseph in 1989, to attend Missouri Western, and essentially been here ever since. We grew up 15 miles away, so this has always been our community. Community, it's an interesting word when you think about it, but what does it really mean? By definition, it means a group of people living in the same place or having a particular characteristic in common. It also means a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. Common attitudes, interests, and goals. As I think of that definition, I often wonder if we truly are a community. I love St. Joseph. My wife and I love St. Joseph. We chose to spend our lives here, raise our family here, invest our blood, sweat, and tears here, but just like anything or anyone you love and care about, you also worry about them. And my worry for St. Joseph is grounded in nothing but a true desire to see it be the amazing place that the amazing people that live here deserve, and I fear it never will because by definition, we're not truly a community. We have several distinct communities, distinct communities that can't seem to find enough common ground and move us all in the same direction. I'm convinced that people who are committed to their own subcommittee do it from a good place, but nevertheless, if there was a rowing in different directions, the boat isn't going to move forward in any one of those directions. In talking about this with friend, I think it comes from a thought process that's a little bit unique to St. Joseph. It's a normal desire to want things to be better for your child or your grandchildren, et cetera. I think if you ask most people, that's what they want. And I promise this is not a criticism, but I think we have so many people in St. Joseph that have great and wonderful memories of good experiences from their school days that their true desire is for it to be exactly the same for their children. In their minds, their experience was so outstanding, they want it to be the same, not better, the same. They want it to be the same. Unfortunately, the only thing that stays the same is change. No matter how great your experience was at a school in 1978, or how you experienced it another one in 1984, or what it was in 1971, no matter how great it was, it can never be exactly the same as that experience because there will always be change. It will always be different. And change either happens for better or for worse. Nothing stays the same. It will change one way or the other. Again, this desire comes from a genuinely good space, but it's an inhibitor to our ability to develop and grow as a community. The resistance to change doesn't stop the change. It just makes it chaotic and unorganized. But make no mistake, change still happens. And to be clear, my thoughts here are not about three high schools or four middle schools or anything that specific. It's about a larger picture for St. Joseph. It's not just our district schools. It's Missouri Western. It's our city. It's our county. I'm sure that we all can agree that 5 plus 2 equals 7, but also, 4 plus 3 equals 7. Two people might disagree about the best way to get to 7, even if they agree... Even if they agree they need to get to seven, if they only argue about the best way and never get there, it's just spinning our wheels. I love the Chiefs and Andy Reid, I may not like every decision Andy makes, but at the end of the day, someone has to be trusted to make those decisions. Fortunately, as a Chiefs fan, Andy's right way more often than not. But if every decision he made had to come from a consensus of every Chiefs fan, progress would likely be very slow. Make no mistake, I get why St. Joseph is slow to trust. I get why they're slow to trust those in leadership positions to make decisions because that trust was absolutely violated by bad actors in the past. Our community's trust issues are valid. But at some point, our community, for us to move forward, going to have to trust again. Decide that even though I think five plus two is the better way to get to seven, I have to trust that someone else will get us to seven by using four plus three. You have smart, dedicated people that are going to be taking over here. They're going to try to get you to seven, they don't benefit because it's four plus three or five plus two. The only way that any of us benefit is if we get to seven, just like you do, just like the community does. At some point, even though we struggle with it, we have to learn to trust again in this community. Or we stay in one spot, which as I said before, doesn't happen, it gets better or it gets worse. To wrap up, I've truly been blessed and I'm thankful for the opportunity I've had to serve this community. The most beautiful gift I've ever been afforded in life is because of grace and faith. A big part of grace and faith is trust. You have people in place that are worthy of your trust. It's my sincere hope that we collectively find the ability to trust once again so that we can truly be a community. Being a successful community depends on it. Four final words, grace, faith, trust, community, thank you. With that, I'd ask for a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Summitt?
Second. My discussion is over, so nice job. Thanks for your.
Dr. Segres?
On behalf of the Board of Education, it's been an honor to serve you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yeah.
Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero, Mr. Carroll?
All right, well, I got to follow that. I'm presenting to you our personnel report, it was attached in assembly. I've also given you copies of the supplemental report, both for approval. I will direct you to page two and three. There are a few things in there about replacing contractual paras. This year, we have decided to limit contractual paras through a supplemental company to, for those that have worked a certain number of hours. And really, the reasoning behind this was the increasing cost of this company. Plus, we've had some paras complain or have concerns about not getting sick days because they don't get sick days through their supplemental company. If they don't work, they don't get paid, and the same with snow days, they do not get paid on those days. So that's why you will see several of those that are on the list.
I'm going to chime in from a financial standpoint. Dr. Anderson, this was a fantastic idea on your part. These people are still allowed, they can remain with the company we contract with. It's just that if they're going to work in the district for more than the year, then they have to become one of our employees. And so, you know, it's, we've talked a lot about the rising costs of contracted services. It's been something that we've been trying to find a way to stem the tide towards that. This is a good step in that way. And also, and it also makes those people, it allows those people to be our employees so that they can also receive those benefits, just like Mark talked about. It takes that middleman out that's not benefiting them financially, it's not benefiting us financially. So, so kudos, Dr. Anderson, fantastic idea to go to this. Financially, we'll find a way maybe to stem that tide a little bit.
So was this a company that I questioned you, did I send you an email on, the SHC company that we pay on the monthly bills?
SHC?
Supplemental Healthcare, yes.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you for answering my question.
Are there any additional questions? If there are none, is there a motion for approval? Thank you, Jennifer and Kim? Do you can call the vote please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero? Okay, Dr. Anderson, there you go.
I'm already here, ready to go.
So the first item on the action item is therapy at school contract. This is an annual renewal that we have for physical therapy, occupational therapy services, and actually one SLP that we contract through a company. As you know, we have an approved list of vendors that we have to utilize to provide services for special education students to meet their IEP needs. This company we have contracted with for several years now, we're very pleased with their services. And so we would like to continue on with them because finding a occupational therapist or physical therapist is almost impossible. So we do have some on contract with us, but finding enough to meet the needs of our students is impossible. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time. If not, I would.
I have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
That's going to be Rhonda, sorry, my. Any discussion or questions at this time? If there are none, do you can call the vote please?
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Ms. Kearns? Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, so the motion passes? Seven zero, next is also yours?
Yes, this is an amendment to the Huddle Up Speech Language Therapy Contract that I actually brought last month. Since I brought that contract, we have lost four SLPAs or SLPs mainly due to family moves. So please note, it wasn't because they were unhappy with our district, so to speak, but their families were transferred or they had other issues that they had to relocate for. So we are concerned because as I've stated before, the unemployment rate of SLPs is less than one percent nationwide. It is very difficult in Northwest Missouri, and really nationwide, to find SLPs to service our students in schools. And so Huddle Up is the company that we utilize for virtual therapies. So we would like to propose an amendment to that contract to add two more virtual therapists to make sure that we can provide those services when we start school. Do you have any questions?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, so it was actually on that contract. Two, the minimum fee is two hundred and forty-four thousand ninety-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
And this is a requirement?
It is required that we provide these services. If we don't have anyone to service them, then we have to make up compensatory services or hire other additional individuals. So this is really our best option in the options that we have.
I think that's the point I was getting at.
Yeah, it's the best way to put it.
Are there any additional questions?
Reference to like what it's being paid out of. I'm, I'm assuming it's getting paid out of special education and then the contact, the encounters increase the revenue, so it pays for itself. Okay, that's all I needed.
That's all I needed. Any additional questions? If there are none, let's call the vote please.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero, next one?
Last one. So this is the nurse supervisor for special services that I presented last month, or last couple of weeks ago at the board work session for you to look over. I did make some modifications after talking with you guys and taking some feedback that the direct supervisor will be the coordinator of health services since it will be a nurse. So Tammy will supervise them, I will just provide some guidance on how things need to work for the Medicaid billing. And that is the only change that we made.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Whitney is the second, who made the motion. Tom, Mr. Green, thank you.
All right, any discussion? And if there are none, let's take a vote please.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And the motion passes?
Thank you.
Seven zero? Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Hello?
Hello. Good evening. So you have before you the Refugee Children's School Impact Grant. And so basically, that is a program to have our ELD specialist conduct after-school activities for our students. So in the elementaries, that looks like STEM and math activities that are a springboard then for speaking and writing, which are two areas that we need to improve. And then in six twelve, they'll do something with art, and then that will be a springboard for speaking and writing. So if you do not have any questions, then I would ask for approval to apply for that grant.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second? Thank you, I have a motion and a second, Kim and Jennifer? Any discussion or questions?
The project date, so you're, when, when are you, when are you going to plot? Is the, I just saw the project dates.
We have to apply by July one.
And then, if it gets awarded, how long does it, is it just a year?
We have all year, all school year to go to the schools to, to use that money.
Okay, that's all I need.
Any additional questions? If not, let's call the vote please.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond? Mr. Richmond?
I have to do it at least, at least once for me, come on. The motion passes? Seven zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. McGuinness?
Okay, I'm here to present the Alternative Methods Application that goes to the state. So on assembly, we have the AMI plan and we have this application. You would be approving this application that goes to the state. And I think most of you know, we have a requirement of one hundred and sixty-nine days in our school calendar. We have exactly one hundred and sixty-nine days planned for next year. So what this allows us to do is provide instruction and support virtually. So that can be done through Google Classroom, Google Docs, or last year, we created some paper packets. And that way, if we had families who did not have internet, and they could just store that away. And then when we had an AMI day, a snow day, then they could utilize that. So in this application, we have added in a five-day window so that if a family doesn't have power or internet, it would give them a little bit of time to complete that work. I don't know exactly if the state will approve that, but I'm hoping that they will. That's what we put in there last year and they approved it. So what this will do basically is allow us not to make up those inclement weather days. If we don't approve this tonight, then we would be tacking on days at the end of the year or potentially having to make up days over spring break. This allows us to have thirty-six hours of AMI. So we plan on using that six days for six hours. And so if we do go over that six days of inclement weather, we would still be looking at making up days, which would be over spring break is where we would start. So it is a benefit for our staff. We do allow our staff who can complete their jobs at home to do that virtually on those days. Of course, maintenance, they can't really do their jobs from their homes. But they do appreciate when people are not in the buildings, so they can move snow and throw down ice melt and things like that. So the other piece I wanted to add, I know last year or the year before, you all had approved for hourly staff to get paid for three days. We wouldn't need to do that on this because we would be giving them tasks to complete at home. And that's what we did this year, so everyone would get paid on those days. I think it's a win-win, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
So we have the three days, it was, the three-day reference was not in a policy, it was in the handbook, right?
Right.
And so that, we took that out?
I believe so, at the employee handbook, yes.
Okay, and then last time we talked, I know this is not entirely on the topic, but it's on the handbook. Last time, we talked about the handbook and removing the crayons to computers. And then we had talked briefly about approving that, but that's not on this agenda. Can we, can we at least get it back to see what it is now? You know what I'm saying, like?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I believe that was taken off of the employee handbook, we would have to look. It's an informational item, so we don't even need board approval to make that change.
I won't.
At the last meeting though, I had mentioned bringing it back to, to approve it as an informational item because it has staff pay information in it. And I thought we were going to do that, but we didn't do that. So at, at least can we see the final version of it?
That comes out of HR. Mark, can you send that out?
Yep.
Perfect. Any questions about?
What does AMI, they do to our attendance?
It allows them to be counted present. And so as long as they either complete an assignment online or if they turn in their packet when they go to school, or if they check in with a counselor, then they are counted present for attendance, so it is a.
I would say our AMI days are much better than a fifty-fifty weather day.
Okay.
Much better.
I was just curious about that.
Any additional? I just, and you may not have the ability to answer this question, but did you have a pretty good response to children turning in the packets?
I'd say the packets, yes. I, I think it's better at elementary than it is at secondary. It's a lot like our attendance, better at elementary than it is at secondary. Early learning has kind of some choice boards on there that are a little bit more interactive. It's not replacing a teacher in a classroom by any means, but it is something that allows learning to continue on those inclement weather days and still count us present so that we don't have to make up those days. We, we try to take and, like, keep in consideration that parents may be working and may not be able to be right there with their child, making sure that they're doing that assignment. So there's always a little flex in there if they come to school and need support. But I'd say probably a better percentage of checking in at the elementary level compared to secondary.
Do they just get one packet that lasts on year, or do you send packets periodically?
So we sent a batch, like day one, day two, day three. And we have links online, so if it's easier for families to get that online. They're not accessible right now, I don't believe. If they are, they're probably from last year's assignment. So that's why we don't approve the plan so that we can, it's, it's a live document, a working document, so we can upload those lessons. We did find it very beneficial to keep the lessons for elementary consistent. So those have been created thanks to our instructional coaches, and they're all on there. So that way, a first grader at Hosea is getting the same lesson as a first grader at Oak Grove. So high school's a little bit different, middle school as well, but there's a lot of consistency in the elementary.
Because I was just thinking, when the packets go home and we don't have a snow day for two months, I think about some of the children I had, they would have no idea where that packet was because they moved three or four times from the time they got the packet till the snow day actually occurred. So that's why I'm wondering if they get sent home, maybe not the same packet, but one that, you know, I was just curious for those children who are very mobile.
Yeah, handed them to parents at parent-teacher conferences, so I think that was a good strategic move to make sure they get in those hands rather than putting them in a backpack and then throwing away. But we did have positive feedback on that. That way, if they want to get online and see the packet of learning, they can, or they can have a paper copy.
And I know that the kids, I know that if the schools that my kids attended at the Bartlett Center, I know that a majority of them, we knew that the weather was going to come and the schools would give them out again if need be. So I mean, it wasn't like only at the beginning of the year. It was your only option, I mean, it was, it was also like as needed to, and I thought that was helpful.
Thank you.
So my only question is, why are we changing the communication software platform?
Well, we have talking points this year, this might get into, Jake Kelly, are you in the room?
Yeah.
So.
He's trying to hide.
That didn't go as well as we had hoped this year, and so we are switching to a platform called Parent Square. Our principals are actually going to have learning on that tomorrow. And so Jake, you want to give any reason as to why we're switching?
We, we had several complications and difficulties with talking points. And Parent Square allows us to do more. us to do more, we're joining, be able to join our district communication and our parent communication. So like the snow day messages and all that, that goes out from one platform, and then all the stuff from the school goes out to another one, we can consolidate all of that into Parent Square. So that'll be a benefit to our families. And it'll give teachers another option of like, I don't want to call it a Facebook-type page, but a page for them to post like things the kids are doing in class that the parents can then see that's private to that group of parents in that class. So just allows them to share out more things to their parents. So it'll be a good change, and it's going to.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, if there are none, I'll take a motion. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Check your phone, Kim. You can call the vote, please.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes? Seven zero. Okay. Dr. Gelfen.
Hello. This is the job description that I spoke to a couple weeks ago, and we did make a few modifications. It is the position that will replace the employee from LT and Global. And so we added more to with communications, as well as a technician. And so I just asked for approval to post this job position for media technician, sports marketing, and communication. I want to clarify, we did make a change to who they were going to report to. It was our secondary director, but they'll report to our communications director now. And we also added, the length of term will be a twelve-month position on a professional staff salary schedule.
Thank you, have a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion or questions?
Mike?
Tom?
Tom? Tom. They're writing things to each other, so.
I have a more voice.
Any discussion or questions? All right, go ahead and speak.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gelfen. Okay. So you, Dr. Seeger?
Yes, stop-loss insurance renewal. I shared this information with you a little bit the last couple weeks. We've had some continuing conversation, discussion. We've gotten that number just slightly better than what we had. If you remember, last year, our increase was twelve point five percent. The other two bids we received last year were for a fifty-three and a fifty-seven percent increase. So Lockton solicited bids. Several companies declined a bid, said they couldn't be competitive. Firm bids received from Blue Cross, Symmetra, and I believe Optum also had a bid, but it expired, and it was not as competitive either. And while the fixed increase of Symmetra was slightly lower by about nineteen thousand, Blue Cross had the lowest overall maximum increase in liability. They're about fifty-three thousand dollars less than our maximum liability. Blue Cross also has a lower cap rate maximum for the second-year renewal. When I say that number, it sounds crazy, but they're capping at forty-five for next year, where Symmetra's cap was at fifty percent for next year. So yes, this insurance is getting a little more expensive, but again, being self-funded, we cannot move forward without having that stop-loss insurance. So anything at two-hundred thousand dollars, once we have claims over that with an individual, that's when this insurance kicks in. We've had, I believe, seven individuals who have gone over that two-hundred thousand dollar threshold this year. We have twenty individuals who are at a hundred thousand or more. So we've done pretty good. Actually, our numbers have been really good, and that's part of why our rates are going up, is because the industry doesn't expect us to continue to remain below what the book of business is. And so our recommendation, recommendation from Lockton, well, also, I mentioned this last time, we did look at changing our deductible. They ran what's called a Monte Carlo, where they evaluated two-hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and a two-hundred-and-fifty. And sixty-one percent of the time, the two-hundred-thousand-dollar deductible still was the most beneficial to us from a liability standpoint. So this will be an increase of about three-hundred-eleven thousand dollars for next year, but that will be funded through the healthcare trusts. Again, as you heard earlier tonight, we're in good shape there with that. So the recommendation from Lockton and from me is accept the proposal from Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Is this, so is the three-eleven increase already in the budget that we just approved?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, if there are none, let's call the vote, please.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero. Okay, Dr. McGinnis?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
Figuring out how this thing works. Okay, we are presenting the job description that was discussed at the work session a few weeks ago on the Business Partner Coordinator. There's a few changes that we have made to that. We are asking to change the title to Real World Learning Coordinator. I just want to preface that this is not an administrator role. This is an extra-duty stipend. We believe that the revamped job description is more reflective of our current needs, based on the Success Ready Network that we are entering with a partnership across the state. The other change that we are asking for is to include the extra-duty pay to be each semester versus the entire school year.
What is the, what is the plan?
It's on step one. I think it's seventy-six.
Yeah, it is.
I think it's for the base of that.
It's category one.
Yeah.
Depends on which step you're on.
Yeah.
But it starts out at seventy-two, twenty-three.
Per semester.
Per semester.
Let me go watch stripper. Have a motion and a second. Is that Kim with the second? Kim?
Yes.
Questions or discussion?
Just like to throw out kind of the, maybe the opportunity that's here with this position to tie deeply into Hilliard Tech and be able to give the district feedback on how, let's see, how we identify, you know, students with a high potential for success there. And so I don't know exactly what that looks like in a job description, but I would expect that that could be a good opportunity for us.
Yeah, it's going to give our students the opportunity to explore some careers while they're in high school, to see if they're interested in it, before they pursue it.
For sure.
Mr. Pearl, why did you change the title to the Real World? Because I'm thinking the outside world won't know what that means. Why did you change the title?
Good question.
It's very in line with the Success Ready Students Network, and so that's actually where that came from. We have a pilot that's happening right now, but in high school. And they have career speakers coming in. They're doing some career exploration, and they're doing some resume building, they're doing interviews, mock interviews. They're going to different businesses. And so we want to expand that to the three high schools. That's really what this position is doing. We don't have enough spots at Hilliard for all of our kids, but we do want to connect them to real-world opportunities. So if a kid is interested in being a landscaper, then we're connecting them with a landscaper to see, is that really something I want to do? So they have an opportunity to job shadow a little bit, talk to that person. And so this position would be the connector between a student at a school and a business, trying to find a connection there. So it is very much real world, trying to put kids in a position to where they'll be successful. After high school, some of our kids don't know what they want to do, even when they're in high school, even when they're in April of their senior year. And so we just want to provide opportunities to help them, help them be successful after high school.
Thank you.
And I will add to that. I think sometimes business partner kind of feels like we're reaching out to businesses to maybe a financial donation or something like that, because when I was building a principal, that's really what the partners did for us. It wasn't really a partnership to send kids there to explore. It was more asking us, what are your needs? And sometimes our needs were a financial. So we're kind of moving away from that financial aspect and more towards student needs.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any additional questions? If there are none, we should call the vote, please, Ms. Donna.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero. Okay, Dr. McGinnis?
Sure. So I know Ms. Lanning asked for this one to be full, but this, everything was loaded up on Assembly. This is an item that you would be approving for a grant application through the state. This would allow teachers and counselors to go to organizations, and this would just do one of two things. It's either going to relieve some of the funding on our side, or it's going to, too, provide some opportunities for those staff who do not qualify for a career ladder. So.
So I had asked.
I have a motion real quick. I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now discussion?
So I had sent, so yes, I had asked for this. Well, I had said that I would pull it from consent, which is fine, it was moved. I sent you all my concerns. My concerns are not about the externship grant. I think the externship grant is great. I think it's been well-received by staff. I've heard nothing but positive things. But including, included in it is a partnership with Herzog. And I sent you all the information about all the things that Herzog has done against public education. And that was a snapshot of things. One of our board norms is serving as an advocate for public education, and I think that it's a hot thing to say, protect public education, and there's an attack on public education. But rarely do we take the extra step to say what the attack is and who is attacking public education. So I'm not, I'm not going to vote for anything that kind of, it feels like voting for something and partnering with Herzog ignores what they're doing statewide. So I'm not going to vote for that. I would have liked the opportunity to give a motion to approve this with the exclusion of Herzog, but obviously, if it passes, then it'll pass. But I'm not going to condone or support a partnership with Herzog.
I had also emailed everybody yesterday about my concerns and my reservations along those lines. And it's mainly because, as you mentioned, our job is to advocate and protect public education. And by entering into a partnership within a company who has the foundation to do the exact opposite, I think is contradictory. And then it also gives, it gives a message to the staff and the community. I had also mentioned in my information to, I gave you guys a draft resolution to not entertain any entities along that measure as well, and we can discuss that later. It is not a part of any action or even informational, you know, but it will be soon. I just, I think that Gabe mentioned a little bit ago, and you had mentioned it in your email about the, about the comments that Gabe said about advocating for public education. It is extremely dire and important now to do so in other ways out of our norm. And I understand, you know, that this may make people uncomfortable, but this is also our job, you know, to protect public education. And so to enter into this agreement, including an entity who does the opposite of that, I think would be extremely hurtful to us.
I want to add to that. I just want to make sure the board is clear that people, our staff, our teachers and counselors, sign up for this voluntarily. We don't say you have to go to this. They sign up because they want to go and learn about organizations in our community. It's a great opportunity for them to share with other kids. And I would say Herzog is a business partner with us. They are. They provide manufacturing day for our students. They provide apprenticeship opportunities. I know personally some of those kids who have gone to Herzog, and now they have careers. So I understand board norms, but board norms also says, put the needs of students, teachers, and staff first. And I would not want to take an apprenticeship opportunity away from a kid.
So, but we're not, but we're not talking about apprenticeship opportunities right now.
But that's what they do.
But, but my, okay. And I guess this is where we're going to profoundly disagree, because I get Herzog can offer apprenticeships for ten, twenty, a hundred kids. But what they are doing to public education statewide, the millions of dollars that they are giving to implement vouchers, to, you know, Mike Keough has taken Herzog money, Governor Keough, they've put together a task force with the explicit instructions, do not increase funding to public education. They have put school choice people from Herzog onto that committee. So I guess for me, I am not going to be personally dissuaded or have Herzog hand me one shiny penny while they're doing all of this in Jeff City and across the state. So I don't have a problem with the apprenticeships. If the apprenticeships came up, you're right, those are opportunities for kids, and I wouldn't take away an opportunity for kids. I would approve the apprenticeship begrudgingly, but I would approve it for kids. But all this other taking their snacks and send them all across the district, sending our staff over to them to cozy up with them, I don't see that as right. And again, the amount that we're talking about, that they're showing faced us, they gave us ten thousand dollars last June ninth. It was ten thousand dollars, and everyone jumped up and down, they'd never done it before. When two months earlier, they spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, all this bond issue, Hosea, the Hosea expansion, the track, the fine arts, the STEM, none of that would have happened if Herzog's money had gotten their way. They spent over a hundred thousand dollars to keep that from happening. The book bans, again, apprenticeships are nice, the snacks were nice, but that doesn't cover for the millions of dollars and the things that they're doing to public education. And I get it, this is not a comfortable thing to talk about, but we keep saying, attack on public education, know your opponent, there's an attack on public education, but we never talk about who it is. We know who it is, they're on Riverside.
I just disagree with this whole thing. I think we need to be community. We do. And we have to work together. We have to listen to people. We have to work with businesses in our community to move forward.
And I just feel like that is a very, we also can't have on rose-colored glasses.
I don't.
So, so-
This negativity creates this us versus them mentality.
But it is.
It's not.
The millions, the millions of dollars that they're spending. So you have to make a motion to call the question. And then you have to take a vote to move on to that. We do this wrong every time.
There's a motion to call the question. Could you call to take a vote to call the question?
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Ms. Kearns? Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No. And the motion passes? Five two. Next item, information. Would you please not do that?
Why?
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Studer?
Happy June, happy summer, happy Monday. I am here to share with you guys an informational item on our St. Joseph District Professional Learning Plan. And so what you'll see here is, we spend a lot of time this year, oh gosh, providing learning for our PDC representatives. And so in the structure of the professional learning community, what we do is, we come together about once a quarter, and we talk about the professional learning supports that our teachers need to move forward. We worked with the RPDC, Dr. Jill Watkins, and what she really challenged us to think about is that don't just use educator survey, look at educator survey, but also look at observations from district leaders and building leaders, and then also look at student outcomes. And so it's really a triangulation of data. Are we moving together in the same as one team with that data piece? And so I just wanted to share with you kind of an outline of the professional learning for 25, 26. And if you look at pages two and three, you will see targeted, sustained, and content-specific learning. And I would love to take all the ownership in this, but really the academic service team and all of the special programs, we ensure that each, gosh, each team is represented to have the right learning. And so you'll see that outlined there. You will also see in there the, what we call the instructional coach team. And that really helps us move the learning forward in classroom, in classrooms and in buildings. And so you'll see that where we finally have the model, where we have our instructional coaches, where we have a content-specific instructional coach. So now we have one in science, math, social studies, and ELA. You'll look at the elementary structure, and it'll say it's going to be based off data. And so what we do is, we look at our student outcome data, which we don't have yet.
I don't know. Maybe your president, she put her phone down and listened to what she had to say.
Maybe you need to, I need you to calm down and be quiet. Can you do that?
Well, I don't know. Can you put your phone down and listen?
I'm looking at the agenda. I need you to mind your business and be quiet, please.
She's wild every time.
Why do you care what I'm doing with my phone?
Didn't we already discussed this?
So, Ms. Studer, you are under the information items.
Yes.
You're even looking.
So we can't, I'm not able to see it. Am I just not looking in the right spot?
It's an attachment there.
Oh yeah, you have to get refreshed.
If you get the refresh, it's on there.
Okay.
You got it, Ms. Chesney?
I will. Very shortly.
That's okay.
Okay, I got it.
You got it? What's that? Absolutely. And so you'll see that instructional coach model that we have placed. And you'll see where in the elementary model right now, we'll work with Tabitha Kizer, who will be serving in my role next year. And then Dr. Adams has determined placement of our elementary instructional coaches based off data, where we see needs for data, and where schools need most support. The other piece that you'll find in there is the members of the PDC committee themselves. And so you'll see each building represented. And then right behind that, you will see the five items the PDC committee voted on. They are all compensation for our teachers. So you'll see, but they are the right systems to move teaching and learning forward. And so you'll see that the approval of item one was a mentor compensation for our mentors in the, in the piece for $500 for each mentor. Then you will also see the National Board Certification. We had 10 individuals last year go through National Board Certification. Many of them just finished up their Portfolio One Assessment in June. So we're excited to see the results of that. They won't get their results back in December. And so it was recommended by the PDC committee to lead it with half. So we'll have six individuals go through National Board Certification. They really want to see the impact, like did we support, did, did most of them pass that assessment? The third item was funding to support the district elementary PLC leadership team, the approval of a stipend for the building PLC representative, and our discovery of other districts that compensate their PDC representatives. And they spend a lot of time with me from five, or 4:15 to 6 o'clock in thinking through what are the right district supports. And the last one was when we have teachers present learning, that they're compensated fairly for the learning that they present. Now, this is an informational item. And so I will bring this back as an action item in July. Please forward any questions or thinking that you might have after you have gone through the document. Can I answer any questions now for you?
So what are we doing? I mean, this is kind of related. So what are we doing in July? So July, we don't typically have a meeting. So we're going to have a, so is this going to be the informational part before the July? So this is meant to be like, like are we having a work session or what?
Do you guys?
Well, I just saw that this has the board meeting in July.
As of July 23rd, because we discussed it earlier in the year. We always have, we have to have one in July for hiring purposes.
July 28th.
And we usually limit it to just that.
It's the 28th.
So the 30th will serve as the work session. But this, we won't see it again until July 28th.
Okay.
We can discuss that on the 30th.
Okay.
Well, I feel like we talked about a lot of things that we're going to be on July. Like, I can't remember. I think it was a handful of days.
Or maybe they're meeting like on the next meeting. But we can discuss that at the work session minutes on the 30th and see what we want to do. Thank you, Stacia.
Thank you. The next one's mine too. So I'm proud to present the curriculum revisions. First of all, I just want to share that this leads to the fulfillment of our new mission statement, which is preparing students for a successful future. And so we restructured our elementary mathematics curriculum to ensure stronger coherence and equity across our district. We updated the language, World Language Program, and expanded opportunities in physical education and career connected learning. Each initiative is thoughtfully designed by teachers to meet the needs of our students and equip them with the skills and knowledge necessary for lifelong learning. And so I would be remiss not to name all these educators that have been involved in this process. So Corey Bertini, Callie Farrell, Matt Jensen, Sheldon Farrell, all worked on the physical education curriculum. And then in the World Language, Jacob Lewis, Denise Dibella, Abby Cruz Maribel, Corinne Russell, Mark Alterman, Eduardo Cruz Maribel, for their leadership in revising and expanding our World Language Program. And then we also had a team at the elementary level that led the math curriculum for K-5. And so as we get student back, student data back from our state assessments, we just don't sit on it and like let it sit for another three years. We act on that, and it becomes a living document. And so we took feedback from teachers. And so you'll see that Tommy Violet, Jennifer Nanaman, Kim Dilly, Courtney Wilson, Susan Harb, Erin Wilkinson, Margaret Hay, Teresa Cordry, Denise Peters, Gabby DeValle, Kelly Nelson, Kelly Robb, Sydney Servais, Christina Thomas, and Amy Weiser, all partake and provided some thinking on the math curriculum. How do we get that better? What, how do we improve student outcomes there? And so they have really restructured and ensured that there were high curricular materials tied to each and every standard. And so our math curriculum was written during the time of 2020, which was the pandemic. And so it had a lot of holes in it. And so we went back through to ensure, are they written in learning intentions and success criteria? Like, do we see what students are actually supposed to learn? And then the steps to getting to that process. And then we also tied a high curricular resource to that. In the World Languages, we changed the name. Okay, it was listed to Foreign Languages, and we went with World Languages. That is the practice that's being led with DESI right now. And so it's World Languages now. It'll be hopefully represented just like the other districts. In Physical Education, I'm really excited about two courses that we hope to offer in 11th and 12th grade, which are Principles of Coaching and Intro to Sports Officiating. And for three years now, I've been trying to move this forward. But working with Kai Turner and Mr. Nolte, we have really thought through at 11th and 12th grade, how do we build a pipeline for officials to lead our sports programs here in St. Joe? And so we are really excited about the Intro to Sports Officiating and being able, maybe not this, maybe try to pilot it this year, but at least have it on the course catalog that we can stand this up in the St. Joe School District. Lots of districts are already doing this. And then the third one goes back to the real world, the learning coordinator. And it's a new course, an experiential learning opportunity. And many districts lead this already in their course catalog, but it's just like, how do I say this, DESI tape, like it's red tape, that allows our kids to go out and experience apprenticeships and internships. But we are able to provide a code in our high school course catalog. And you'll see the description for that course as well. Again, that would be offered to 11th and 12th graders to really think through the client connected project work and the market value assets. But also those apprenticeships that we have in place. So moving the college and career pathways forward, one step at a time, and ensuring that we have the systems in place to do this.
You might get a base theme out of the officiating and the coaches. I get that. I'm excited about that. I, I guess I kind of understand the new courses and the description. I don't really understand what's going on with math. Math's pretty important to me. How, how do we describe to me and to the community what we're doing tangibly to prove that? I realize we're going to teach more to what's being required by DESI and those kind of things. But specifically, are there any specifics to that that we can hold on to?
Yes. Mr. Richmond, I'm glad you asked because I'm learning too, right along with you on that. What's happening to our math data? Why are our students not having that strong foundation? There's a couple different reasons, really. We're trying to improve the content knowledge of our teachers, how you teach math. And so providing that professional learning for the supports, and you'll find that in the professional development plan. But also, we have an opportunity to look at our state assessment. And what is tested on that state assessment is probably the priorities the state has decided. And so we're looking at those IBDs, which are the, like, let's say it's question number one, you know, what standard was question number one assessing? And where do we have that placed in our curriculum, our scope and sequence? And then getting teacher feedback for saying like, okay, do we need to move it up? Where is this going to provide the best learning? The other portion of that is, in our math curriculum, not every core resource is going to align to the Missouri learning standards. Most states are aligned to the common core. And so there are some holes when you go to purchase a high curricular instructional resource because they're not writing to Missouri. They're writing to the 48 other states that practice common core. And so in the past with math, it just didn't have a resource listed there. And so it was blank. And so sometimes teachers just, you know, like, if there's no resource, I may go find my own thing to use, or I just, I might not teach that standard per se. And what our team decided to do was, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to ensure that there's a high curricular resource attached to each and every standard.
See, that's a good explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's really helpful.
Yeah, I, we, we're working really hard. I feel, I'm going to knock on wood, but I feel some strong movement in the secondary mathematics. We're just trying to lift up our elementary mathematics right now and see what supports can we provide for our teachers to make this math movement and push it forward. So.
Great. I look forward to read those.
Me too.
Okay, any additional questions?
I just admire that they're doing this coaching and refing. Because I know some high school young men who are already doing the refing for younger, younger kids and same age. So it's nice to be able to implement that in the district.
Yes. And it's, it's going to be great because then our, our student athletes, if they want to stay connected to the, the sport in which they love, this is a way to stay connected to the sport in which they love, and be compensated. I know Mr. Corel knows how much referee, and, and Dr. Edgar knows how much a referee makes. It's nice, it's, it's nice compensation. So.
Okay, there's nothing else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Adams?
Good evening. I am presenting the St. Joe School District Comprehensive Literacy Plan. This is really a living document that is our district's implementation of Senate Bill 681. So the requirements that DESI expects from school districts regarding literacy, I feel very confident in this document and the things that academic services has put in place to continue to align our curriculum instruction and assessment. So the only updates that you will see in here would be like example, our new ELA resource that you guys approved, Benchmark Advance, we're really excited about that. That's a big piece for us. We're going to expand Dibble's assessment up to third grade because we're seeing some good results there. So those are the changes that come about, or anything that DESI provides guidance on. So I know last August, DESI came out with some revised guidance for Senate Bill 681, for the reference guide. So if they put out something new, then we have to go in and update it. But this is the literacy plan for this coming school year. Any questions for me regarding it?
Anything at this time, guys?
I feel like I have a good question. But we just heard that the math, how they've changed some things to improve in some certain areas. Are there specific things we're doing in the literacy that are going to drive improvement? I couldn't, I couldn't find that in the plan.
So, yes, much similar to what Ms. Studer was discussing. So we are getting ready to implement a new ELA curriculum resource in the elementary world. And so that will be tier one across all grade levels, all classrooms. So that will be, that's, that's going to be a high quality instructional material that DESI has approved. You guys approved the purchase of that just a little while back. So that will be big for our teachers and our students to experience consistency in instruction. And then the same thing with some assessment pieces. We had teachers working today on putting together common assessments that are going to address the priorities in reading, much like the math that she was talking about. So we're just trying to tighten and align everything up so that there's some consistency in our practice.
Great.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, next up, just a reminder to review the policies. CENF areas, are there any questions, anything so far?
So we'll be looking at those for July then?
Yes.
Okay.
Or the next meeting, wherever we have the next.
Okay.
No, not the June 30th. It's going to be too busy of a day to do that. Yeah. If there's any questions, reach out. Okay, next game.
All right. Attendance report. Thank you to Dr. Lau for preparing this detailed report for you. I'm not going to read it to you verbatim. There is a lot of good information in there. We'll just highlight a couple of things. The first one, if you notice, we did have close to a 5% increase. We're obviously still not where we want to be. But things are getting a little bit better, and we finished strong. And I don't know how many times we could say we finished strong in the spring, to be honest with you. I don't know that that happens too often. So that could be a good sign moving into 25, 26. And also wanted to make note of the most improved schools. You see in the document, Lindbergh at almost 15%. Edison, 11 and a half, Carden Park nine, and Truman, 7.75. So congratulations to those schools. So congratulations to those schools. I would entertain any questions that you might have in regards to the attendance report.
I think that's very exciting for them.
Yes, absolutely.
Those are our more challenging schools, so to do that, I think that's awesome.
Thank you, Dr. Edgar. Okay. Financial handbook, is this you, Dr. Seeger, or is it Ms. Jenny?
Um, I can talk about it. Uh, really not any changes to it, uh, it's really just information for you. Only thing that would change, uh, is any, any, uh, spending guidelines as far as the dollar amounts. Uh, there were some things that modified a little bit on that. Uh, but everything else, Jenny, pretty much same, other than that changing the dollar amounts. And that's set by policy, so.
Any questions, Dice?
Oh, we're not gonna approve this.
You know, this information.
It's just information.
No, I mean, like.
You don't, no, I know, it's not, it's just an information item. Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Edgar?
All right, uh, the last item on the agenda for this evening, the long range plan update. I had supposed, spoke specifically to you regarding a timeline. Uh, we asked DLR to be here tonight to present this timeline. And so, uh, I'll let them go ahead and go first and then we'll entertain any questions that you guys might have after the presentation. So Kevin, thank you.
You bet, you bet.
Um, for those, uh, new board members, I'll introduce myself and the team that's here tonight. Um, I'm Kevin Gresher, uh, I'm your client leader from the DLR group and have been involved with the district for the last, since twenty nineteen, I think, so. And, uh, Brett Collins?
Brett Collins with Napvile's Construction, uh, project executive and, uh, was assisting on the previous bond effort.
Yeah, and, and also, um, I just gotta give a preamble to the timeline. Um, one of the things that we did was pull our team together, uh, those that were involved, um, with the bond issue certainly, and, and architects, contractors. Um, and then we also had your staff. Um, we decided that, uh, if, or at least, uh, one of the requests was, uh, for us to go out and maybe take a look at Lafayette, look at Central, look at some of the, um, uh, conditions of those buildings, just knowing, um, where, where you had, uh, told the community you might go. And so, um, we went to those buildings and, and had the, our tour guides were the principals of the buildings, kind of walking us around, looking at everything in the buildings. And, uh, certainly we're looking at shortcomings, but we're also looking at the things that really work well in those buildings. Um, so, um, we put together a summary, uh, after we did that, just to kind of, uh, give the administrators a, a sense of what we saw and, and some of the ideas of what might happen. And I think that, I think they may have shared some of that with you in your work session. And, um, this is the timeline that we came, so the request was look at, uh, what, if you did think about doing a bond issue in April of twenty-six or April of twenty-seven, what would that look like? And what would those timelines kind of look like? And these are big, broad areas, so it's not necessarily, uh, there's a lot of things that would go on in here. So in, uh, on the, the, the top, if you look at the top, that's twenty-six. And then you look at the bottom, that's twenty-seven. And we just put them next to each other so you could see what would be happening over that, that period of time. Basically, you're look, you know, this, uh, um, this whole entire thing. And I'm, I'm, see, I'm missing, uh, the construction period of that, so. All right, it's in there, I guess, it is in there, so. Um, so in twenty-six, if you were to think about doing a bond issue in twenty-six, you can see if you started in July, there'd be about three months of what I would say we're trying to determine a scope and, you know, where and, and, and what it might be if you're gonna do anything. Um, and that's in that kind of ochre color, uh, those first three months. And then the next is, is actually having discussions a little bit with your community, kind of like you've done in the past, where you've had community groups or a community team, having that conversation a little bit about what would that be? So that's an October, November, December timeline. The big, the big thing for you is that red, uh, or it's actually orange with an asterisk in it. Um, and that's the Board of Education vote for an April of twenty-twenty-six bond. What you would have to do is probably vote in December if you were going to do a twenty-twenty-six bond in April. Um, you wouldn't have to, you, that would be your first vote. That would get you, uh, to the point where somewhere right after the first of the year, you would have to make that decision so you can get it into the state, to the county, and, and go through the process. So then there would be, uh, that, that, as you can see, that's the vote that happens there on that number two. And then there's that kind of campaign to the information to the patrons, uh, which you can do. Give, give the, uh, uh, an informational campaign to the community and the bond vote in April. You can see where design would start. Design would, would start in, certainly in May of, of, uh, of twenty-six and, uh, go until, um, April of twenty-seven. And then you would start your construction, um, and if you were, depending on what you were doing, that would be in the, in August twenty-seven, twenty-eight. You can see there's a brown line in August of twenty-seven. That would be the time if you were, just, I think that's, uh, the timeline for, uh, if you were to go to two high schools, the thought was that would be in August of twenty-seven. Certainly, I don't know that that's been said, but that was a, a date that we put out there, if that were the consideration. So, um, construction of your, um, buildings would be done and, uh, you'd move into any of the new high, whatever it was, whether it was new, whether it was renovated, it'd probably be that twenty-nine of, to third, uh, uh, twenty to, twenty-nine to thirty school year. So from twenty-six, you would most likely, depending, again, not knowing exactly this total scope of that project, but we're saying it's, it's somewhat, some, some scope that you might consider. Yes.
If you guys were looking at, at Lafayette, what did you decide about parking?
Well, there's, parking is, is almost, um, I mean, it's significant issue. Part, and especially if you were to, we looked at these two, these, we were looking at both buildings. It's seventeen hundred students at, um, Central and eleven hundred students at, um, uh, at Lafayette. And so if you wanted to service those students at that location, and that was going to be the long-term, uh, home for those high school students, you would have to extensively renovate all the way up to football field in a, uh, in that parking lot that's, that's there. Or if there's purchase of property anywhere around, so. Yes, we, I mean, we just, and generally know that there is not enough parking for eleven hundred students in a long-term situation.
And so, as you were looking at the two schools, a plan about a new bond came about? I'm trying to get the evolution of this.
Uh-huh, of this, of this schedule?
'Cause I know that the board has not even discussed a bond yet on the ballot of April. Like, our last combo about the long range plan was to go, you know, to Plan B, to the two schools. And I know that I was thinking, we'd be getting more information about that plan and not like a timeline. It's a great timeline, but, um, kinda jumping the gun a little bit to me.
I'll, I'll answer that, Kevin. I guess, um, administratively, we, the reason why the bond, and you don't have to run a bond issue. We just put that back in there because administratively, we felt like, uh, we wanted to try again. And, uh, so the end result, the two high school model that you voted on and the plan is the end result in this timeline as well in twenty-seven, in fall of twenty-seven. The, you have to get to two high schools, period. And I say that because you, you, we have to, um, maximize our resources. And so with that being said, um, downsizing the district is part of that overall plan. And it has to be systemic. You have to look at it from a, from a K-12 standpoint.
So the, but the long range plan that we approved last September had that we would go to a two-high school model in twenty-six and that we would go to the voters for a bond issue to renovate two existing high schools in April of twenty-six, right?
Right.
I'm right. So, so I'm pretty sure I'm right. So we're, is this, are you guys presenting this to us?
As Plan C?
To go away from, I mean, 'cause this doesn't, this becomes, I mean, this is a different plan.
Well, the reason why it is there is specifically because we felt administratively like we should try to pass a new high school.
And, and I, 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 I understand that. And I think we all are on the page of not, not just we need to, well, I don't know if we're all on the same page, just that we need a fancy new high school. To, again, as I say every time, it's not just about the high school, it's about the middle schools, it's about the elementary schools. It's about all of that. But my concern is that we're not thinking rationally or realistically. Because this bond issue that we just had only got, what, forty-seven percent of that vote? And we have to get, how, so I guess if this is what we're gonna do.
What am I gonna do differently?
How are you gonna get ten percent more people? So I'm just gonna round it up to, you need two-thirds of the voters to approve this, right? Say, or fifty-seven percent, I mean, slightly, slightly less than two-thirds. So if you look at the precincts and how the voting turned out, you didn't have the support of the precincts in the south and you didn't have the votes of the precincts of the north. Because both of them are having to give up their high school in some form or fashion. Either they're having to get up, give up their high school for a middle school. Would've gotten a shiny new high school, uh, would've changed a lot of things, but they didn't want it. So now, if we go back at it in twenty-six or twenty-seven, you're gonna lose even the people that you already had on the south side. And we had some people on the south side, we had some, some good support from the Martins and the Turners and J.L. Robertson. So now you're saying, you're gonna have to pay for that high school, but you're not gonna get it, or I, I, I.
Well, and we, we didn't even specifically talk about location.
Well, but you're still not, but you're still not, I, I don't know that you're gonna get enough of their vote to make up that ten percent. And then the north side's the same thing. They may not be losing their high school, but they're losing their small high school. So you're not gonna get their vote either. And I know that there are people on the east side of town that want this. I'm one of those voters in those precincts that want it. But there, I don't know how you're gonna find enough votes to get you to there, to get, to get to that point, at least not in the next twenty-four months.
And in the meantime, all of the reasons kind of why we're just kind of putting things on hold to get this, and odds are, unless there's major changes, I don't know what we're able to do differently to make that ten percent happen.
So the long range plan stated in April of twenty-twenty-six, we would ask the voters to approve eighty million no-tax bond to upgrade two existing high schools. That's what it states.
So is that, is that, is that the bond that's referred to here?
No.
This is new high school, two times.
It's a new high school right up there, is what it says.
I, I don't, I didn't, I didn't take it as a new high school, but, uh, making that decision, determine scope of work and where.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just reading it there.
Yeah.
So I think this outlines the decision-making process to define what that scope would be for that bond.
Yeah, there's, where, when it says.
When do you need to make those choices or those processes?
Cause you're not actually.
Defining the scope.
Okay, you're not really meaning a new school. It's like a vote in order, you know, to get to a new, like.
I was saying that there's a, there's a three-month period.
This is kind of misleading.
Yeah, if you wanted to do something in twenty-six, there's, there's a three-month time period that we're saying you, to try to determine that scope and where and what that is. And that's, I don't know if that's two high schools, if that's Lafayette.
Could be renovations, is what you're saying.
It could be renovations, you know, but, but that would be your decisions making that.
Be.
Yeah. The only place we talked about.
You're not gonna be able to vote a bond in April of twenty-six, do renovations to have them ready for fall of twenty-six.
Right, oh, no, we know that, we know that.
Well, that's why.
And that's why it says go to two high schools in August of twenty-seven.
It says a new fourteen-hundred student high school.
Okay, that, yeah, it shouldn't say, it shouldn't say new, it should say two new, or two fourteen-hundred student high schools. At the time I was creating this, this timeline, it was, where would you, if you did that? And then we did change it to thinking seventeen hundred at Central, eleven hundred at, at, 'cause I.
Okay, that makes more sense.
And I apologize for misleading.
Could be for renovations.
Yes.
To the schools in order to get them, as we need them, not building brand-new schools.
Yeah, if that's.
Okay, I misunderstood, my apologies.
So are you saying, I'm sorry about this.
No.
So are you saying that we need this renovation done? Like you said, the parking lot needs to be done or for it to work. So are we saying we have to run a bond to be, even be able to move the Lafayette and Central?
You know, and that's, that's a question that needs to be answered. I'm not saying you have to, but one thing that I would tell you too, in the two-high school model that was presented in Plan B, I want people to understand, that's not what we wanted. And that's not gonna change the education of kids, right? So whether it's a new high school or whether it's eighty million dollars for renovation, which I, I want to, want you to understand, eighty million dollars seems like, it's, it's a lot of money. But when you're, if you're renovating these older buildings, you're not gonna get much out of eighty million dollars. So just kind of keep that in the, keep that in the back of your mind. But, and, but what I'm here to tell you tonight is, we have to, St. Joe School District has to figure out a way to downsize the district. Because staffing is an issue. It's gonna be an issue for twenty-five, twenty-six. Last meeting, we had fifty-eight positions open. I don't know where we're at today. That's not gonna go away. And so, um, how you get there doesn't make any difference. And I apologize for the confusion.
But I think you did mention last month, we don't wanna give up on a new facility. I think going.
End result, right?
Right, right, we can't just settle and this is our long-term plan.
But I, I, I think it feels like some, some, we talk, it feels like we're shopping for a car, like a really nice car, like a Corvette, but we have a two-hundred credit score and no cash. You know, no, I don't, you're not following me up. But my, my point is, if I lost you, we have to find a way to do it without additional money. And if there's no way to do it without additional money, then we have to figure out something different. So either we figure out a way to go to two schools or we, I, I hate, I hate to say, you figure out how to make three schools work. And I don't know if that, do you make Benton a freshman center or, I, I mean, I have no idea. But I hear over and over, we have to get to two schools. I agree with you. I've seen it all. We need to get to two schools. But it can't hinge on a sixty percent community vote, because I do not believe you're going to get it. And, and we can keep going to it, but at some point, it's just pissing off the community more and more because you just keep saying, we're right, you're wrong, we're right, you're, now, do I think we're right? I do think we're right, but you have to get sixty percent of the vote. How are you gonna get it?
And when you say we don't have the money, it's, 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 uh, that's a comment towards having to ask for additional bonding capacity. Is that correct?
Right, right.
Yeah, and I guess the conversation that, that we had administratively and maybe why it landed back on, um, a new school again, because putting eighty million dollars into the current facilities, that, I think, you think forty-seven percent was bad, I think it would probably be in the twenties if you ran something like that. So that, that's where, I don't have. So that, that's where, I don't have the answers, I don't have all the magic here, guys. But, um, I thought it would be good for you at least to have some sort of timeline, um, or Dr. McGinnis to have some kind of a timeline. And with the Board of Education to move this thing forward. So what, what that looks like, if it's eighty million dollars worth of renovations, or whether it's a new school, whatever it is, it doesn't make any difference to me. But at the end of the day, I think we all agree that we need to get to two schools.
And I think that's where, I think there has to be some focus on a plan that does not require a bond.
Bond.
Or, or, like I said, or, or how do you keep this three schools and staff them? Which I, I, I understand, you have to pay more people, like you have two options with staffing, you can pay them more and make their job easier.
And, and that's why.
And it's not about paying more, you know, it's, guys.
There's a shortage, yeah.
It's real western, not turning anybody out, northwest's not turning anybody out.
I get it.
You are not gonna, I mean, the teachers.
Because of the attack on public education.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the teachers just aren't going to exist.
So, so again, I just think that's where it, it, I'm on the analogy kick, I don't know why. It's like a doctor telling you to stop smoking, like, yeah, you need to stop smoking, but you're not going to. So we can keep saying, two schools is what's best, a new school is what's best. I mean, we barely touched on the fact that a new school with all the capacities for improved learning environment, I mean, we've talked about all that. You guys know all of that, but that's not what they're, that's not what they're, that's not what they want. So we're got, to me, we have to find a plan that we can control, that we can do to get us to that point. I just don't see us making up ten percent of the vote.
I think we need to go back to the survey that we took at the end of the vote. I mean, all we did was look at the results, we've done nothing else with it.
It's pretty split.
So I think we need to go back and look at that and analyze that a little bit, and use that information that we have. If we're going to, even for five percent more, at least look at the information that we've gathered to see, cause we haven't talked about it really.
It's, it's pretty split, fifty, fifty.
Yeah, and there's really, it's, it's hard to find a gain, you know, unless that would've been a, uh, that would've been a topic of conversation more.
Right.
And I, but I think the more we talk about how do we get those votes, so if we're gonna talk about how do we get those votes? Which I don't even know if this, that's, that really is legal, I don't know. The more we talk about how do we get those votes, then how do we answer staff? What do I do? What do I do? I mean, I, I got on the job postings yesterday, bless your heart, like, the, it's, Carden Park is scary. Like, there's some things that are scary. So I, I hear what you're saying, like, let's look at the results and let's try to like, get this passed because we know what's best. I get that, but if we can't, I don't know how we're gonna make up ten percent of a vote in twelve months or twenty four months. And in the meantime, our staff are concerned, and, and families are concerned. You know, if you had an eighth grader or a kid going to be a freshman, that's a scary time.
Or a junior.
Yeah, really any kid, really, really any kid.
I guess I'm a little, uh, surprised, but my expectation tonight was I was gonna hear something along the lines of, okay, Mike, here's the deal. We, we, we've got, we, we, we could put, uh, eleven hundred kids in Lafayette, but we need a new lunchroom. And we need to buy three old houses to turn them into parking. And, and so then if you wanted to go that route, it would cost you, you know, we'd have to go to the public for a, a no tax increase bond of X amount. Are, are we marching in that direction, or are we?
Yeah, I think, I think, yes, but we, but they, they just needed a, um, I mean, in order to do that, they just needed direction.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought that was weak.
So that, that's exactly where we're, that's exactly what we're getting at, or what we're.
Okay.
I wanna do it, Mike. So did you tour the inside of it? Do, do you have recommendations for the inside of Lafayette, or is there a lot that needs to be done?
Well, I think there's a lot to, if, if you're, if you're talking about Lafayette and Central being your two, um, forever high schools. There's a lot to be done at Lafayette, and a little bit to be done at, at Central also.
I don't think we wanna call, I mean, I don't think we should call them forever high schools. I mean, I, I, I get what you guys are saying, like, I, I one hundred percent get it. But Bodie is a good example of this. We don't wanna put air conditioning in the gym because we might close it, Bodie has not had air conditioning in the gym for a while.
That's not why we have to put air conditioning there. I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I wanna clear that up.
You said you were dumb tonight. My point is.
My filter might be broken now.
I like, I missed you, where were you? Uh, no, but my point is, well, then let's put air conditioning in Bodie's gym, no, I'm sorry, anyway.
I got another HVAC.
My point, my point is, we talk about doing things to buildings, and then we, we haven't done them, cause we're like, I don't know, and we just don't do them, like.
And then nothing ever happens, and then eight years from now, we're still having this conversation.
Oh, it's eighty years, so. I, I would love to see something like what Mike was talking about, is, you know, if, I, I worry about going to the vote every, every year. I know I said last time, if we wanna do it every year, let's do it, but I think that that just further, further alienates the voters. Um, I would like to see something like what Mike mentioned of, okay, if you're gonna do this, here are some things you have to do to make that workable. If, 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 if we have to get to two schools, cause I don't know how you tell the staff and the students and the families, we have to get to two schools, but we're gonna kind of, I don't know, maybe twenty, thirty.
Yeah, and that's all identified, this is not, it's not like it's gonna take us nine months to do this, I mean, it's all there. We just needed kind of direction on what dollar amounts we needed to figure out. And then, and the conversation kept coming back to, I don't believe it's smart to put money into those buildings, you see what I'm saying? So that, that's what's creating, that's what's creating the issue here.
Yeah, I know, but that's what the community chose, though, is what the community chose, like.
No, absolutely, no, I get it, I get it.
It's not a new school at this time.
So it's all part, it's all part of the plan, and it wouldn't, I mean, it's not gonna take very long to put all that, to, to answer your question.
I, I think those, put that together, and I said this last time, and I'm, I'm not probably super eloquent in saying that, but. I, I think if we're gonna consider the two-school model, that one option is consider Central and Lafayette, and that's what we talk about. But I think we should be considering Benton and Central. I think that we have a, um, I think there, I think we, there is a, a better likelihood, and I think it puts us in a better position for a new school in the future. And I don't think that it's a lot more to figure out, well, what would it do to turn Benton into a thousand person and Central into eighteen hundred? Um, I, I just, I think this is the time that we need to be considering that option before we, before we embark on this. And then say, what have we done, um, because we're in that position for longer than we anticipated. I think a, I think a longer-term plausible, meaningful plan would be Benton, something in the south, south end and Central. Rather than the two schools near each other in the north. And then I think we make a compelling case for a new school, um, somewhere in the northeast.
Well, and I think, one, one thing that I would say to that, Tom, is, and, and I think it's, it's been identified several times why Lafayette and Central were chosen. Because of the numbers, and so that's where you have to find out, you know, because it's probably gonna cost a little bit more money. But that wouldn't take them very long either, because in two thousand nineteen, we gathered all that information on Benton as well.
Well, and I, I hear you on that, but the, uh, we, we kind of said, and now I hear tossed around, that Lafayette could handle eleven hundred. And Benton could handle nine hundred and ninety. The number's not so far off, and if we had to make it up in the short term, it's Central. Um, and I realize the implication of that is we have to think about what would we do with the attendance in a new school then, I know that too. I've, I've thought ahead to that, but I still think that, um, we're, we're overly optimistic to think we're gonna have two new schools in five years. That's not, that, that's overly optimistic. And I think what we have to say is, how do we, how do we make a plan that says, um, we, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, we're gonna move fiscally responsible? And I think, I think that's still a possibility with those two schools, it has to be proved out.
Yeah.
But I think that it, um, it is, and then I think it positions us to make a compelling case to say, um, we heard you in the south end, you didn't wanna get rid of the school. Um, you didn't wanna make that change, and I respect that, I'm not saying it negatively, I respect that. But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward in a, and, and we're gonna make an attempt in another area. And I think it's, I think we do this other, and then we'll have no idea where we're thinking we're gonna put a new school.
Well, I don't think all our, I don't think all our bonds are filling because everybody just wants three, I really don't. I think the community just wants the input, they want some kind of input, and I think, you know, looking at those surveys will help. I think listening to your community's gonna help, and I do, I agree with you. If we're gonna spend money and renovate Lafayette, and get a bond to renovate them to stay there, I mean, we're gonna name the same amount of money to renovate Benton then, to make it so it can hold that many. So I think they're different choices, and we need to sit back and look at them.
Yeah, and I, I, I just think we gotta, I, I think we, I think we can win. And I'm, I'm optim, I'm an optimist, I think we can win, but we can't win with a losing plan.
Yeah. But what is, can, can you explain what is winning to you? Winning is getting to two schools or getting to a new high school?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of things, winning is our student success, you know, it's our vision, I don't want to, but we're talking now about, we're talking about specifically. Um, and I think that in the short term, we recognize there's a need to get to two schools faster than we probably can. And we need to, we need to consider what's the best two options to get there, and we need to sell the community on this intermediate plan. And then, but we need to sell that in the, with the ideas, we're gonna make a longer-term plan. We're not gonna over commit funds, um, I liked what I heard you say, we don't have to do a lot to Central. Um, you know, I think we need to take a look at what do we need to do at Benton, um, um, at, while we're looking at Lafayette. I'm not saying we abandon that, I'm not saying we abandon that, but I am saying we take a hard look at that from a logistics standpoint. And really, from a five-year plan, it's, it's a better, it's a better solution in my mind, early on, thinking early on. And then, and then we, um, and then I think ultimately, the solution is, we need to upgrade our facilities. That, you know, we need eventually to have a new school, and then hopefully be able to follow that up at some time with another new school. But now we're talking about a ten-year plan.
So are we supposed to give input tonight on this is the direction we wanna go, or like, what, what are we supposed to do?
I mean, I think as long as the admin is okay with looking at Central and Benton, I'm okay with it. It will get us to two high schools, and that's our goal, until we're able to build a new one. And so, I mean, if we're able to get information on that, are we able to get information on making that happen?
Yeah, I, I think that we could, we could talk about.
Or are you guys able, you know, to meet about it and discuss, like, any of those options? As long as the admin are okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Well, and I think we've said that from the, I mean, I think we've all kind of said that, like, I don't, I don't have a preference of who, what, or how. But between now and next time, what are we hoping to see? So at the next, next time, what do we wanna see?
I know that I would like information on number one, going to the two schools if it were Lafayette and Central. And then number two, going to the two schools if it were Lafayette, um, if it were Benton and Central. If we're able to get that information in order to be able to move.
And I think that the components that Mike mentioned, of, okay, if you do Benton, I know we have some topography issues there. You have Hyde right there, I mean, you have some topography issues, I don't know what else, I know there was a water line issue a couple of years ago, like, that, and then.
Right.
You'll be able to look at everything in order to be like, okay, we were going to do this.
Yeah.
Here's all you would need to do.
Yeah.
And then if you're going to do this, here's all that you would need, if we're able to look at whole pictures and not just a little bit.
Some kind of thumbnail on, on how much?
Right.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, it would be included in what you would need to do in the cost.
And I, and I think that the administration, and I'm, I hate to put that on you guys.
Okay.
I've done a poor job of, um, looking downstream to that, and I do appreciate what Whitney says. We have to say is, well, then what, then what do the feeder schools look like in that scenario? We have to look at that as well, um, and not, not, not construction-wise, I'm not talking about that.
Well, and that's easy too, I mean, that's, we ran it all.
Well, and I, I took that information yet, and I just, I just didn't do a good job of trying to synthesize that and how, what I think that would look like. But we, we need to make sure that that's feasible, but I think there's some, I think there's some land by Benton that we have a chance to have access to. I, I think that we're not buying houses, I think we could have, I think we could consider a winning solution in our community in, in that area. Uh-huh.
So I'm hearing you say you want one plan that's Central and Lafayette, what work would have to be done, maybe pros and cons of that? And then another option of Central and Benton, some pros and cons, what work would have to be done, and an estimated cost of that.
Right.
And if you do Central and Benton, how is that gonna look like for the feeder schools as well, because now Benton will not be your middle school?
We'll still have sixth graders that's from garden.
Yeah, what, what, but that, but we also ought to take a glance at, what would that mean? What would either one of them mean for, um, when we were ready to present to the community a new school? And I think that, I, I think that the solution is really difficult when we say we're gonna have Lafayette and Central, but put this money in, and now we're gonna have a new school. Now where in the world is it gonna be? And so I think we should, I think we have to take a lit glance that says not only, how do we get there in the short term? But how's that affect a five-year plan? That, that's, that is my feeling.
So what are we, to work, what are we doing with this?
Nothing right now until we get information, well, because we're right now in the orange part right now, right, anyway, I mean.
Yeah.
Getting the information and the ideas is on schedule with this.
Yeah, and I, and I would, I would consider this what we would typically call a feasibility study. And this is the feasibility of the levels of what you could do at each one of those locations. Um, to give you an idea of, you know, from minimum to maximum, to give you the idea of what does minimum buy you? What does maximum buy you? And I, I can, uh, also, uh, your comments about what does this do and what's the future look like? I think we, um, I might go ahead and share a link to the master plan that was done in twenty nineteen, which you'll see fourteen different versions of high schools. What, what would you do if you had a one new high school, two high schools, three high schools? There are, there are examples of that, and what that does to the, the district as a whole. What buildings might not be in part of the, the organization, so I'll share that.
This is good, I mean, I know that we were, um, only looking at, at the initial plan on the recommendation of admin, you know, over the capacity, you know, but looking at.
Yeah.
Each plan I don't think is bad, you know, I mean, I'm completely okay with either. As long as we choose a plan, and then in a year from now, well, and when there's new board members at the table, and we're not saying, let's go back and look at this, and then we're doing nothing at all.
I hear you on that too.
Cause that's kind of where we were like a year ago, we were doing this same conversation, so.
And I'm glad that you're going to be doing this with Benton also. It also opens up time for the community to see both pictures. To get an idea for a feel, or a feel for, uh, our intent is to make sure all the students and all the community is served the best that we can. So I like, I like taking that time also to get that second plan. And then if it's displayed to the community, or like you're, what you're doing now is informative to our community, but the next one will also be that, and more input from them.
And I'm not, I'm not pressing you, but this one falls kind of in you guys, um, and, and the admin.
If it's money, you can talk to these guys.
But, um, you can tell, we're, we're gonna need some of that to begin to say, you know, which way does the ship going here, you know what I mean? So, um, the timeliness of that, uh, you know, I'm not trying to put pressure, we're not making the decision, with the information gathering, we need to be, we need to expedite that as much as we can.
Yeah, I think.
Also, when we're looking at the information, are we also able to get a, a recommendation of administration as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, guys, anything else?
Yeah, thanks for putting your heartwork into this.
We're starting messing that up.
Uh, are you doing the events, the, the things? Okay, uh, so I just wanna say to Dr. Edgar, Dr. Seagris, Ms. Stewart, and Dr. Okay, uh, so I just wanna say to Dr. Edgar, Dr. Seagris, Ms. Stewart, and Dr. Gilpin, happy retirement, um, I will miss arguing with you, not Eileen and not Lara. Um, you are leaving your departments better than you found it, and that is all that you can help for in the roles that you have fulfilled, um, thank you very, very much.
Okay, future, oh, sorry, future meetings and events, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, eight-thirty a.m., Boardwork Session Retreat, uh, TMC, District Closed July fourth, uh, July eleventh, July eighteenth, and July twenty-fifth. July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five is the next board meeting at TMC. We need a motion to adjourn to executive session percent six-ten dot O-two-one, closed meetings and closed records for legal hiring, firing, discipline, and promoting a particular employees, and thirteen individually identifiable personnel records.
I have a motion, is there a second, are you seconding?
I'm seconding. Who made the motion then?
Kim made the motion.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Burns? Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
All right, this meeting's adjourned.